That we know that you, we have you on our side and whatever that we need, we know you're provided for us, Father God. But Lord, let us come together right now and bring our ideals together, uh, bring our, uh, comments and everything that, uh, we can contribute, uh, to this endeavor, Father God. We just ask that we come together in unity and Father God, we come together victorious, Father God. So Lord, we just say thank you.
Thank you.
For the meeting of the minds of the day.
Yeah. Have you heard the root?
To go through and open up. Going through them, Father God.
Yeah, God.
Yes, Lord, we know it might take, might take some time, Father God. Uh, putting us in position with this time, Father God, to set us up for something even greater. So Lord, we just say thank you. I'm praying for patience. I'm praying for obedience, Father God, and I'm just praying for, uh, understanding, Lord. So Lord, we just say thank you. We give you praise, honor, and glory in Jesus's name. Amen.
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 Amen. Amen. Thank you guys so much for coming on. This Stephen coming on. I think we got, uh, Elvis on, Stephen, Jessica joining us. Charmaine, and we got some other people. I know, uh, Gina said she don't think she's gonna be able to make it today. So that's why I'm trying to make sure it's recorded. A pals of Maddie wanna be, uh, in it as well. So she wanna be involved. So I'm gonna make sure she get the recording. So I am recording. Uh, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, the rock, William, right now, and let him just go forth. And we're gonna talk about a property located at sixty-six in Sangamon. Uh, so I'm gonna let him go forth and, uh, I'll come behind him. All right, you can go forth.
All right. How's everybody doing on this beautiful day?
Great.
Right.
Great, wonderful. Amazing.
So, that's right. So like, uh, my beautiful auntie said, you know, we're looking at this property, uh, on, uh, six and Sangamon.
So give it a minute, you guys.
Also off of them.
Okay. It's Stalin nephew. It's Stalin.
Um, Stalin. How's it going now?
Okay, let me.
Oh, let me see something here. How's it?
Let's see. Maybe you need to start talking first and let us hear you. I think it's your.
Kick back here.
Okay, yes, you are. Let me.
Okay, okay, I can hear. Now, I don't know what was going on with Stalin.
Okay.
But, yeah, I was saying, uh, you know, this going, this route that we're doing now, you know, it allows us to grow, uh, matter that, um, is not, we're not under a, under the gun per se, you know, 'cause once we get the property, you know, we could take, uh, the time, uh, uh, that's needed to, you know, take it, you know, bring it to the level where it needs to be, you know, just along the simple fact that we own it and we not looking at paying no, uh, no, you know, uh, heavy note, a month by month by month. So, uh, the main that we on right now is raising the funds. So I just wanted to say that, you know, this is a good, uh, joyful moment for us. I mean, we've, you know, only been moving, you know, in seven months, you know, and our membership is raising up and we're already in a position to looking at a location. So, you know, I want anybody to, like, you know, this, you know, the pressure or, you know, it's, you know, anything at this point but joy, you know what I'm saying? And so i- in that same spirit, you know, is what, you know, we have to push out, uh, this crowdfunding aspect. You know, the, one of the main things, uh, that just wanted to stress is that, you know, the crowdfunding, because the crowdfunding is something that, you know, you don't have to put money into per se. You know, it's good if you have five, ten dollars or whatever to put on, but the main thing is sharing it. Just sharing it, sharing it, sharing it, sharing. The more shares, the more it's gonna hit someone that say, okay, you know, let me donate, or, you know, even just putting our name out there into the existence and letting people know that we'll know what we doing. So, you know, 'cause a lot of times, you know, when you start asking for donations, you know, people, you know, it's a thing, but, you know, uh, feeling this way or that way, but we only feeling, or we only, we know that we're doing something that's benefiting the community. So, you know, we gotta push this out with abundance and joy and letting people know, you know, what we doing. You know, that's that one aspect of it, the crowdfunding. So I'm saying, like, everyone on here, uh, if you, you know, if you haven't shared it, or if you, uh, uh, not, uh, familiar, I know a lot of our base, uh, that follow the co-op page is from, in our analytics, is from like forty-five and up. So everyone might not be, uh, as internet savvy per se, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, that's just putting it out, the analytics and, you know, how to GoFundMe. Everyone share, every time you share it, not necessarily even making a donation, but every time that you just share it, most to share with anybody, it increases the chances of it going into the next person or hitting somebody that's gonna donate by one percent. Now, that might seem, that might not seem like a lot, but, you know, out of, you know, this, you know, you get ten thousand shares, you know, that means that you, out of that ten thousand, one hundred people is, you know, they put money on, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, just pushing that out there, you know, the whole thing with the crowdfunding, the whole thing with the GoFundMe, the share, 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 share. Just share, 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 keep sharing and keep sharing and keep sharing. So, you know, I think that's enough about that. Uh, now, just, uh, the, you know, we looking, the other aspect, of course, is how we gonna get the money in the other. So, you know, working on a couple of things. Uh, you know, I talked to my brother today, you know, I'm gonna talk to him a little bit more. Uh, so, you know, we got a couple of people right in our family in our mess, though, uh, that I feel, you know, that we able to pull it off, even if we gotta come up, you know, just with the initial funds. Uh, now, I would say that if we do have a person, you know, within the family, if we do, uh, uh, okay, I'm gonna buy it. You know, I'm gonna buy this for the co-op or whatever, you know, that, you know, then, you know, I think that, you know, we work that out with them, you know, and, you know, the co-op will begin to lease it from them, you know what I'm saying? Till we can get our money up to actually purchase it, purchase it back fully from that individual.
Okay, that's a good idea.
So that's another option. So a person that's looking at it, you know, even my, you know, anybody, you know what I'm saying, you know, we could bring it to them as an investment, like, okay, you know, you know, I mean, we got a co-op, you know, that already got fifty members, you know, we can handle, you know, if you, you know, persons like that. You know, we coming in, you know, and we said, okay, well, we're gonna give you, you know, four hundred fifty, five hundred dollars a month. Lot, but, but, you know, forty-five thousand is not a lot. When you, when you, when you look at from a loan in the net aspect, you know, and the aspect of paying month, but the person, uh, you know, if they paying cash, you know, they, you know, they coming and they paying cash, you know, they receiving money back, you know, they gonna make money off their investment, and then once we, you know, the co-op gets into a position to buy it back from them, you know, they making their money back and they making some, so it's a, it's a win-win for the person. You know, that, it's a win-win for the person. So, and just putting that out there that, you know, letting everyone know, that's the aspect, that's one of the aspects that we looking. You know, so, uh, you know, we just continuing to work, uh, in, in just a time, you know, in a timeframe of what's going on, I just ask that, uh, everyone share the crowdfund, the crowdfunding, you know, make a small don- and another thing, you know, you can make small donations, even if it's a dollar, two dollars. You know, the more people, though, when they share, the more people see that people are donating, the more it's gonna make them wanna donate. So, you know, they, you know, that's how that works, that, you know, they hear this, but they, yeah, they got two donations today. Let me go ahead and, you know, thi- this must be a movement that's rolling, rolling, you know. People like to see success, people like to see movement. You know, of course, in these times, we know people like to see positive things, you know, with all the next things that's going on. And, and on that, that what we doing is, is, it's a great necessity. I mean, it's so needed. It's needed even more than, you know, the average person understands. You know, 'cause of what's, you know, the direction that the world is heading into right now. You know, it seems small, but, you know, the, the potential of, you know, where, uh, where we going is big. We have to start off small to reach big. So, that's it. That's what I'll say on that. Now, I will say also that, uh, I was thinking that we need a person, uh, you know, I, I really don't wanna do it, but I will, but we need a person that's can talk, talk it up. Because even with sharing it, sharing and sharing it, we need a person that can run it down and none long, two minutes, you know, and just explain to people what we doing, you know what I'm saying? Because what we doing is something that I can't see anybody will say, no, that's not a good idea. Any, any person from old, young, you know, whatever, that takes the time to listen to what we doing is gonna say, yeah, we need that. You know what I'm saying? But people need to hear it. You know, they need to hear it, understand what's going on. So, you know, I was thinking, I know, Pastor, you doing a lot, you know, in the church and stuff, but this would good. You know, I got the gift of gab, you know, uh, you know, just break it down and let people know. You know, and just post that also into the page and post it, you know, when we sharing about the link, you know, and we sharing in this, and that, and my you. Once again, I'm just gonna close out by saying, this not a thing to be under pressure. We are not under any pressure right now. We're moving in grace and abundance, you know, and knowing we already moving ahead, you know, we moving forward. So everything that we get from this, even if, you know, somehow we not able to get this property, you know, it's gonna lead us to the property, the first property that's for us, 'cause we building and we growing. So, uh, that's about everything that I wanted to bring right there.
I like that. I like that. Okay, so what I wanted to do and wanted to say is, as me and, uh, Lydia was talking about earlier, is that we want to pose the property to each and every member. We wanna give them the opportunity to weigh in, to say, yes, I think that is a good direction that we should go in, or give them the opportunity to say no, and then come up with how many yes, and come up with how many no's that we have. And is everyone in agreement?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't see any problem with that. I think that, uh, you know, a- along with that, um, you know, it just needs to be, uh, well, yeah, that's some separate within itself. So, but, you know, we reaching out for people and getting their input, um, along with it, even if they say, says if we get no or whatever, you know, uh, just linking them into, uh, contributing to the bigger picture of, of we doing regardless, you know, whether they, uh, you know, for this particular property, um, or not, you know, just knowing that, you know, what we doing, you know, is, the property is one step on the road to the bigger picture. But, yeah, I, I don't see any issue with that. Mm-hmm. I think that's a good idea.
Right.
Engagement, 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 engagement. The more we engage people.
At least we could say their voice was heard.
Right.
You know, since we supposed to be a dem- demorac- dem- democratically owned organization.
Yeah.
Right.
The ma- democratically owned organization. Oh, my God, I don't know what's going, like this, too much going through here at one time.
Right.
But, uh, we're supposed to at least pose it to them. So I was gonna ask, Elvis is on the call. So I was gonna ask if he could do something that I could do a blurb, we can work together about the sixty-six and Sangamon property. As far as it's only forty-five thousand dollars, it needs a lot of renovation. Uh, they want, and then it has citations, uh, that's attached to it, but, uh, the alderman, I'm sure we can work it out, whereas, uh, the citations is us coming in, being new owners, uh, we could help make that go away. I heard, uh, the, one of the gentleman, he's an electrician, he went with us to look at the property. And he said, once you are a new, a new owner, obtain the property, and we're gonna do a full renovation, that should take care of whatever they were, uh, you know, cite, citing them for, 'cause they was operating the store and it still had a lot of issues. So that's where the citations was going, coming from. They was operating the store and still was not addressing the citations. As far as not using licensed and bonded, uh, workers, uh, the, the contractors and things of that nature, whoever they were getting to do the work. They was not licensed and bonded. They did not pull permits. So, uh, one of the things going for, we are looking at, and even for whatever property, we're gonna, uh, 'cause we're gonna be in Chicago. So that means we gotta do everything by Chicago's books. So, um, we're accumulating, uh, vendors, my sister just got one today. Vendors and that nature, we're gonna have it, uh, Gina, uh, capture all of our vendor information. If anybody else know of contractors, general contractors, uh, licensed, bonded, working city of Chicago, we want that information. Uh, we're looking at plumbers, we're looking at electricians. Uh, we need an architect. We need someone to go in and do us a rendering of how we want the store laid out. Now, even before we go further, I would like to still, and this is why I need Elvis on board. I would like to, uh, make sure every member have an opportunity. After we give them information, we're not gonna just say, we're looking at a property on sixty-six and Sangamon. We're gonna give them a reason. We're gonna tell them our whys, uh, as far as being the very first Southside Food Co-op location among many more that we're planning. We're not just gonna stop at one. We want a, even a larger one eventually, but maybe our first one. After talking to the gentleman who let us in, he was the one who ran the store. And he said that store, uh, and this is just in general, he gave us an average, twenty thousand dollars a week in revenue for a smaller store. Um, I think we could probably even do more than that, depending on what type of products and goods we sell, and then two, the inviting atmosphere that we, uh, will be able to maintain in that area. So I think we're gonna really, and then two, by us being black owned, uh, that's gonna make people wanna come and shop with us as well. It's another store that's close, uh, behind, like a little smaller, uh, market. I think it's probably anywhere owned. Uh, but I still think that we have the advantage of this, uh, season where people do want to spend their monies with black-owned businesses. And then we, uh, you know, put ourselves out there as being inviting. We're community-owned. We're not a corporation where one person at the top is reaping the benefits. The benefit is going directly towards the community of owners and our community. So I think that that's our, okay, here we go. Uh, yes, it is, um, Jessica, Jessica is posing a question I would like to answer. That's good. It's a good one, Jessica. Uh, she asks, is this property in the middle of a residential area as opposed to a more public traffic street? And why this location? Okay, it's residential, but it's on the corner. It's a direct, uh, where you, sixty-six and Sangamon is on a direct corner. Uh, that location was, I said, formerly a, a, a mini mart. Uh, it was open for fifty years. Uh, I'll let my nephew, uh, William talk more to that as far as about that location, because he remembers it. But it was open for fifty years and it was very profitable. Uh, it was not, uh, one of those, um, location. The only issue was they was not keeping the property up. Uh, as outsider owned the property, uh, outsider owned the property, but it was someone else leasing the property and it was not being kept up. So therefore, we get a lot of citations or whatever that comes from the city when they do their inspections. Uh, let's see. Okay, uh, Jessica, did that answer your question? And you said, why this property? Uh, pretty much, Jessica, you wanna unmute for a minute?
Yes, yes, I, I, that answered the question. Um, I, uh, am not familiar with that area.
Okay.
Uh, I, I know that I, um, yeah.
Okay.
We'll talk about that. But I'm not familiar with the area at all, and I, um, uh, was just wondering, is this more like an Inglewood?
It is. It is Inglewood. It is.
Is Inglewood, but, uh, we call it, is, the Southside Co-op, um, is more, right now, we're gonna start in Inglewood, basically, is what we're doing.
Well, we're looking, only because the property was only forty-five thousand dollars for a brick building. Uh, we could get it to capacity of about two thousand square feet, once it's, uh, properly laid out, which is a nice size for forty-five thousand dollar investment. Uh, and then also, uh, by us being new at it, I think starting smaller might be a good, uh, strategy. So we can learn how to run that store properly and learn the ins and the outs, you know what I'm saying? Instead of just trying to start grand and we're not really understanding all the, um, that comes with running a store, you know? I think, I think starting on a smaller scale would give us experience, would give us, uh, even by being so low in price, we won't have a lot of what, overhead. And I think that's another goal for us to start out, is less overhead as possible.
And it gives us capital.
Capital. Okay, yeah, capital to probably do another location too, 'cause once we have it paid off, right, we could use that for what, uh, what? Capital, okay. You know, collateral. Collateral, thank you. I told you, I got a lot going through my mind right now. It's a lot. But, uh, yeah, you're right, collateral. Um, later on, 'cause, you know, we wanna run it at least what, three or four years, uh, before we say, okay, let's do something else in another area. You know, so.
Right.
Uh, we're saying, why, uh, sixty-six and Sangamon? Because the property came in so low. And by it being a, uh, they call it a mini mart, uh, the owner said he would like to keep that same type of store in that neighborhood, because it was beneficial for that neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Hey, Jessica.
No questions, but I wanted to chime in on what you were saying.
Okay, that's great.
Hey, how's everybody doing?
Great.
Um, if you jump, if you, if you're familiar with it, you could jump into Google Maps and put in sixty-six and Sangamon, and you'll see the area. You could actually do like a, uh, satellite view and all that good stuff and actually see what's going on around there.
Yes.
So it looks like to me, um, Morgan is treated as a main street over there, and then Sangamon is like, uh, maybe a block away.
Correct. That's right. We grew up over there. I grew up over there. My husband grew up over there. Uh, it's a lot of people on the line that knows that area. I don't know the store though. My, my, I, I don't know the store though. William knows the store. I don't know the store. He knows.
Quick question. The, is that One Stop still over there on sixty-seventh and Morgan, or is that closed?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know. I have to look. I have to look.
I stayed on sixty-seven and Sangamon. I know exactly where that's at. Yep.
Okay.
I see a Morgan, a Morgan mini mart on there, and I, I believe the, the spot that, that you guys are looking at, it used to be S Z Foods or M and S Foods.
That might be it, yes, 'cause I think that was on the.
Yeah, it's S Z Foods, and then right across the street from S Z is a vacant lot. And initially, I thought we were talking about buying a vacant lot and making that like the, uh, like a farm or, you know, like, we're gonna grow the, somebody mentioned earlier something about some seeds, and I thought that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, that's something else. Uh, I found the, yeah, I found the project where this person have a lot of land. And what they do is they give you a parcel for twenty-five dollars. So I know my sister is interested in growing, uh, fruits and vegetables and stuff like that. So I thought that that might be something good that we could add to, uh, Southside Food Co-op. So, and then we would, uh, bring it in, the products in and sell them at the store. So I thought that was good, plus it would make some money or however we wanna do that. Amen.
Yeah, and the other note, the other note I want to make is, it, it looks like it's right off the expressway, which, which is definitely a plus.
It's not yet.
Especially for supporters and all that good stuff. So, it's definitely a, a great location.
Easy to get to.
And it's, it's a, it's a lot of things going on over there too. There's a, there's a park over there. There's a couple of parks over there, actually. Um, and because it's accessible from the, from the expressway, that definitely makes it, you know, favorable.
Yeah, yeah. Now, Stephen, we might have to get you on board. You and Jessica help us out with formulating our talking points. That's something we really looking for people to do. Uh, you know, I, I look younger, but I'm sixty, I'll be sixty-one in a couple of weeks. I'm like, I just need the younger people on board, you know, because it's just easier sometimes for you guys to get that flow going, and I might get up here, I be having so much going on. So I need you guys. So, uh, yeah.
So I have a question. So do we know if there are, is there a block club on their block or on, on the two blocks in the area? Does anybody know?
I can find out. Yeah, I can find out. Yeah.
Bring them into the conversation as outside partners.
Okay, no, that's great. I can find out.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a great question, Auntie. I think, uh, you know, once we, uh, you know, that's something that we need to, the same thing that we're, um, posing to the members, if it's possible. You know, if we could maybe do some flyers, you know, just for that immediate area, you know, just let them know also, you know, what we doing, what we planning on doing with the store, maybe the, you know, the five blocks surrounding that area, you know, if we could just, you know, drop off questionnaires to them, you know, just let them.
Let me just ask, say one thing. Do we wanna wait before we do that to make sure we got the property?
Yeah, I mean, not necessarily if we got it, but.
Because see, people, when they see something good, if you don't have it locked in, they could come in and get it, you know what I'm saying? Sometimes people see something good and say, man, it's a good idea, but it's still on the market. Why is it not saying pending? I, I'm funny.
Well, if, if, if someone, i- i- if someone, or, uh, this my attitude on that. If someone is in a position, uh, to buy the property before us in some type of way and gonna do something positive with it, then I'm getting it. I mean, I don't, you know, we, what's for us is gonna be for us, and we gonna, you know, you know.
Think once we have the property, then we should start reaching out to the community and what's coming.
So why? Cause you don't know anybody else's intentions of, as far as if they gonna do good for the property or not.
So you mean a space of time between, between getting an accepted offer and actually closing? That's when we should engage the community? Is that what you're saying?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Only because, now, now, let me just tell you, go ahead. Let me just tell you my thing. In talking with the owner, his wife is a broker. He really likes us. He wants us, right? But the issue is, we have to have proof of funds or somebody saying, you know, I'm gonna get this building for them. They just want that with our down payment, first of all. After we survey the membership, 'cause that's to me should be number one, membership on board, two. If somebody's willing to buy the property and we pay them back, I think that's great. And then that would be something that they could show from their own bank account, I have the funds, I can buy the property for them. That's all they're looking for. And then they'll take a thousand dollars for us to finally do our final close and all that. We would tell them when we wanna close. If we wanna close in two months or whatever, you know, they'll, they'll take that. Uh, but that's our issue. I, I don't wanna move too fast till we kind of firm up something. So that makes sense?
It does. Also, just the full budget, because I would be curious to know what the full budget is, 'cause purchasing a property is one thing. Getting it up to snuff with all the, you know, signage and inside, you know, setup and everything, making sure the vendors are set up. So, on opening day, you have everything you need to start making your money. That's, that's a whole nother thing. So, I'm curious what the full budget is beyond the forty-five thousand. You know, any one of us could probably purchase a forty-five thousand dollar property. That's not a lot. You don't have to have a lot of collateral, I mean, fund, food funds to do that, but what's the, what's the business plan for the, for the business to actually, you know, what's the projected start date? You know, what is, what's, what's the plan? What's the whole plan?
Now, now, what I can speak to is, I am trying to get before, uh, Autumn and Sawyer again. He already knows about the co-op, 'cause we were talking about another property on seventy-first, uh, over east, uh, and that property, uh, was sold. So, um, he already knows about us. He liked, he liked our idea. He likes our, um, you know, vision for our community, so he's on board with it. What I was thinking was, as I've been re- What I was thinking was, as I've been researching and maybe you know this more than I, about the uh neighborhood opportunity funds. They have small and then they have a large. Small to two hundred and fifty thousand, large is two hundred and fifty thousand up to about five hundred thousand. So what I was gonna ask uh 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 Ottoman Sawyer is, would that store qualify? As far as that's what we'd be doing is just renovating, you know, for renovation. Would that store qualify and then it's a lot directly across the street, will we be able to purchase that lot for a dollar? Uh because I know you could purchase lots for a dollar in that community if you live, you know, have a business in the community or whatever, or live on the block. So what we wanted to do was see if we can get that lot that you was talking about Jessica and use that all. And things of that nature. Um so. Did you think it's because we gotta cross the street?
No, not because it's across the street, because it's right next door to somebody's house. You know what happens after the store closes and you got a parking lot next to somebody's house, unless it's.
Gotta gate it, we gotta gate it anyway.
Well lit, and well lit, then you have to talk to that neighbor to make sure that, you know.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea. That's a good idea though. No, you're right, we need to just talk to the, engage the neighbor now. What I could say too is, the gentleman who showed us the property ran that store for the owner. And uh that that was running the store. He ran the store for, I don't know how many years he said, he lives on that block. So he knows everybody in that community, maybe I could get him to start talking it up a little bit, just getting people's feedback. On it, you know, just, just to hear what he's got to say. Uh maybe I even have him come on and share a little bit about that store as well. Uh now, one thing I liked, by him knowing the people, he's been in that community, I think was all his life, fifty years? Uh all his life, he says never been no problem over there at that store. That, that really pleased me. That he said he's never had no problems with somebody trying to stick it up or anything, and I, I really like that. That, that, and then he knows everybody, I like that too. So, and he's a God fearing person, I like that too, as a family, I like that too. So uh I I think I'll have him come on and speak with us a little more, but again, first of all, we gotta. You know, just see what the whole uh membership is feeling. And then two, uh we need to talk to the alderman and I'll get back to you guys to let you know what he's saying about it. You know, what did he think? Do we think it's something that we can get funds for, whatever, just pick his brain. Uh and then that'll help us as well. Uh but my thing is, again, uh we had started the fundraiser already, which I don't think is a bad idea. This is something William was talking about. I don't think the fundraiser is a bad idea, but we need to let them know. We are looking at a property, but if we don't get it, it's the fundraising and the monies are gonna be set aside just for purchasing a building. Not for anything else. So if they're giving it, it would still be held for that purpose only. What do you guys think about that? As far as making sure that that get worded in that this fundraiser better. What do you guys think?
Auntie, I I think that that's great, yeah. Did someone else want to speak on that? I think that's a good idea. I heard somebody about to say something.
I would, I was just saying absolutely, because the organization is not just about this one project or this one property. Is, you know, the lo- the the long range, you know, strategic plan is to have a property. That is strategically placed to benefit the community and if this property to be some other one. At the website though, for this uh NOF, for neighborhood opportunity fund, I just wanna read this to you real quick. It says, as far as eligibility, nonprofit organizations are eligible for, for the NOF grant, but they must be engaged. In a retail or commercial activity and providing a cultural asset that is open to the public. And that is, that's the co-op all the way, you know, the whole way through. So it sounds like this organization is definitely eligible to apply for the funds. Uh we just gotta work on getting the application grant in.
Amen.
I wanted to, go ahead, someone say something, I'll speak after.
I'm sorry, I was, I, I was thinking about what about if we reach out to like c- community activists? Because they have a large problem and a large platform, should try to get them on board to try to campaign for us as well.
Yes, yes, yes.
I like that.
Look, that, and that's going into what I was gonna say Auntie. I believe that we definitely should engage the community now. We don't have to wait, we got a contract. I mean, we, i- i- we not doing nothing, nothing shady, nothing behind, nothing, we could just let them know, look, this how much money we got. You know, you welcome inviting to our meetings, you can hear everything that we doing, you know, we need your membership, we need your donation, we trying to get this property. You know, somebody come and snatch it but under us or something, we still moving in a direction, you know, we, I, you know. We still moving in the direction of everything that we said and we haven't said anything that we not, you know. So I think that, you know, but going in line with what Shamain saying. Community activists, you know, if we could even locate, you know, whatever people that's, you know, doing something in the community around it or that's already got something going. You know, just plug them in, it's, it's, it's close to what we said before, you know, it's, I mean, it's Southside Food Co-op.
Have you contacted, raised about it?
No, 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 that's what I wanna do today too, if I can, I don't know how much more, we need to talk about the property at sixty-six. Uh but I want to come up with a, a standard kind of verbiage. That we're using when we're meeting with different, you know, people, organizations, just coming up with the standard. Uh did I send it to everybody? That's what I couldn't remember. Did everybody get the kind of verbiage I was talking points? That I wanted to uh see if we can uh kind of firm up. Did everybody get that text message? Jessica, did you get it?
I did, um I was just about to uh text you, let you know that I actually have an appointment at one P M.
Okay, okay.
But I do want to, uh I'll talk to you, uh I'll give you a call or a text in a text to talk to us about uh. And I'll, I'll, I'll watch the rest of the recording as well.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate you. All right there, thank you. All right, love you. All right, so, okay, that's another thing, when we going before the activists or whatever, I mean, they need to hear something consistent. And I have not come up with a consistent script, so that if we could do that, that'd help us. Cause what I'll do is, maybe just start sending a bunch of, you know, uh uh emails to just different organizations. I've already started following a lot of them, but I have not reached out to them as of yet. So if we could do that today, you think we've got time to do that guys? Just, e- everybody got the script? Who's on?
Yes.
Okay, did you look at it? Okay, how's it sounding? Shell, how's it sounding? What do you think? You think we need to add more to it or Elvis?
Well, I didn't, I didn't get the script, so.
I put it in your uh, I sent it to your messenger.
Uh all I saw is, it's about the equity, but I didn't see the uh.
It should be right above that.
Okay, let me see, look again.
That was the second one I sent you. It's a long dissertation. It's right above that, I'm looking at it now. It says goals, it start out with goals for the day. Okay, Michelle, did you get it? Rick, Richard, Steven, you got it? I know you driving Steven, so you can't really probably talk on it. Maurice?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so you, what do you guys think about that verbiage?
It works for me.
Okay, that's Steven, okay, I got you. Okay, uh let's see, no, uh Maurice?
That's good for me as well.
Okay, you don't wanna add anything to it or? Uh Michelle, what are your thoughts? Mimi, did you get the script? Seretta? Uh it's right above that, it should be one, so another one right above that. And it's just say uh.
Click on it to, you have to click on it to make the full message appear.
Right, because it's a long message.
Okay, you talking about the goals?
Uh yeah, and then right under that, right under that. So I, I think, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure, is this something that we can decide upon is, is how we should go for it? I, I'm gonna reach out to the community activists, I'm gonna use it for even talking points for the alderman. Is this something, what do you think? Do you think this is, does this represent us well? That's what, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, I had read it earlier, I think it sound good.
Okay, okay. Anybody else? Thanks, Mimi. Steven? Yes, huh?
It might be a better way to format all that information. That's in a text, you know, for people to see, because it's, it's a little bit harder to read.
Okay, so how can I format it? Can I send it to you? Will you format it for me?
Okay, I can, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You want me to, you want me to do it in a Word document or something? What you want me to do?
That'd be better if you can do it in a.
Okay, I could do it real quick, hold on, okay. You guys can keep talking, uh reading, are you reading? Are you guys reading it or what? Shamain?
I read it, it's not good, but like Elvis said, it's uh high, you know, it's formulate, you know, formatted better.
Right, right, yeah, I wanted to uh, I did that because uh I was just trying to get you guys something, but. You know, I wouldn't send it out to anybody else like that, I'm sorry, I should have told you guys that. I uh, I was just trying to let you guys know what I was thinking.
Sounds, sounds good, yeah.
Okay, that, yep, that's what I needed.
I read it also, I read it also, Sister Liddy, I thought it was good.
Okay, okay, so that's, I think, I'm, I'm, okay, that's helping me a lot. Okay, so I just did, I'm dropping it in a Word document, let me take out these things at the top. Take all this out, hold on for one moment, I'm getting ready to send it to you Elvis, and then. Uh you know what else? Uh is, should this be included on our uh campaign, Elvis? Our uh campaign for the uh funds, you know, raising cap, that well, capital campaign, that's what it's called. Should this in- information be included on that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure some information is uh applicable. It'll be helpful to state it on a, on a page.
Okay, good, okay, so file. Share it, you, you wanna say, you want it as a PDF or you want it as a uh?
And stuff like that.
Document, okay. And uh your email, I'm sending it to you now. All right, so I just turned that into a Word document and that, that should be coming to your email, okay? All right, so I think that that was a big plus, because that's something that been coming to me that we need to really make solid that. Uh and then two, guess what, once we get it formulated and uh I'm gonna let Elvis look at it again. Michelle, would you look at it again for me, just to see if you can enlarge it even more? And then I'm gonna make sure every member have this verbiage. Because if they, you know, wanna share, if they wanna talk about it, everybody saying the same thing, I think will be so helpful. And uh meaningful as far as spreading the word, amen? All right, so.
Question.
Okay, good.
Okay, so say um, so say an elderly person purchased the share, right? Would they be able to, will somebody be in their family be able to take over their share?
It's, it's a family purchase, you're right, it is a family purchase. So you mean, you mean outside of the household, maybe in a whole nother household?
I'm saying, I mean, will, will they be able to pass it?
Like transfer. Transfer, is it transferable? I think that's something let's look into and see what the other cooperatives are doing in that respect, cause I'm not sure, I haven't had.
Do they share if they pass?
Okay, I found out, all right, how that's handled. If they pass and can they transfer, right? Cause I know with here, we can't just transfer, can we? I think it has to be approved on, by the board. Uh like say if something happened to me and Mark, you guys could just move in, I think the board would have to approve you guys first. I know what we put down is sent back, we get that, like we put almost five thousand dollars down. That comes back, huh? That comes back, that comes back, so I know that happens, but I'm, for the hundred dollars, I'm not really sure, I'll find out. And can they transfer, okay? All right, that's still, that's a good question. Okay, I'll find out. All right, uh a- any other questions? All right, so that's good, okay, so again, making sure the verbiage is tight. It's gonna go out to the community activists, we're gonna find out if there's some block clubs in that block. In the surrounding block, I'll find that out, that's, that was really good, key point. Uh again, working the fundraiser and then two, uh Elvis, just kind of modifying the uh term, uh the verbiage on there. To just say that we are looking at this property or whatever. If not, we will keep this money to our, for our first property. So not saying, you know, if we don't get this property, they start asking for their money back, we don't want that. So we wanna be able to get, keep their money, right? And just use the money and, and keep it secured for building only, only for the building. But whatever this fundraising for is just for building only.
Yeah, yeah, it's just coming down to the exact verbiage we would like displayed up. But I know, I definitely get what you're saying though.
Okay, all right, yep, that's, that's cool. Okay, one more thing, okay. I wanted to talk to you guys about, did you see that community equity fund? Did you guys read that? I saw that on another uh co-op site, I liked it a lot because of that community and the condition of the community. Talking about, they might not be able to pay the hundred dollars, they might not even be able to pay the ten dollars per month. But just trying to see if we can make sure everybody in that community is a member. So therefore, we will work with each and every individual that desire to be a member in that community. We talk about in that community and ask them how much they, they think that they would be able to do a down payment. If it's ten dollars or whatever, and then give them like three years to get it up to the hundred dollars. So what do you guys think? I think that that would build a membership.
I think it's a good idea.
Good idea, yeah, I mean.
And that's what it's called, community equity fund. And even if they don't have it done in three years, if we revisit them and they're just saying, maybe they have only done a hun- uh seventy or something like that. Maybe the co-op could pick up the rest of the thirty dollars or something, or a sponsor. Pick up thirty dollars and then they bring it up to their, their full hundred dollars, that's something we can, you know, I don't know, let's just, what do you guys?
Along with that Auntie, yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I think that we can add, like you were saying, uh we could do like a, what is it, a sponsorship fund. You know.
I like that, I like.
Anybody that just want to put money in, uh you know, for people who don't have money.
I like.
You know what I'm saying? Meaning that, you know, if you wanna put in, you know, and, and we promote that, you know, we promote that sponsorship fund to the community, let them know. You know, like, you know, we do have a sponsorship fund, so you can sign your name up on a list or whatever, you know, just to be, become a member. You know, they could show that they're not working or something like that, I don't know if we wanna require for people to show, you know, that. You know, they can show that they're not working, or something like that, I don't know if we wanna require for people to show, you know, that they have no, you know, their income, or something like that. But you know, just sign them up, and then, you know, as the money, as people donate for sponsors, you know what I'm saying, to be a sponsor, the people who sign up on a list to get free memberships, you know, we just go down the list. You know, that's why we really start, you know, I mean, we can say it now, you know, uh, you know, as we, as the membership grows, or whatever, I think that's gonna really help us out, and both, and help people out, you know.
I, 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 I think it's a good idea, but, but I do have, uh, 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 little reservations about that, because you know, a lot of times, people try to be slick, you know, and they, they, they have it, they say they don't have it. So I think we should recommend that they show some type of proof that they're at least unemployed, are not working, or they are collecting, uh, a SNAP, or something like that, showing that they're not.
Right.
People try to do some, some, some slick things, to try to get what they want.
Yeah.
You know, they could have it, but they don't have it, you know, so I, I just think, that's just my, that's the reservation I have, but I'm just putting that out there, you know, just to see how y'all think about that.
Also. Nah, I think that's a good idea, you know, we could, we could make it for SNAP, or, you know, yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Let me just say this, though, sometimes you got money and got SNAP. So, so I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say that, I just prefer for them to say, I don't have a hundred dollars. If they telling you like that, they just saying it out their mouth, I don't have a hundred dollars to invest, but I wanna be a member, can I come in under the Equity Fund? And I think we, we probably would, now, if we, what about just making it for the area? The area, whatever area, I don't know, do you guys wanna start it now, is that something you wanna start now, or you see in the future, like, once we get our location?
Well, the Equity Fund, that, I think that's something a little bit different, cuz they still paying money on that one. I'm saying, what I was talking about is like, do, setting up a little bit different, but yeah, we could start, I think, you know, we could start the Equity Fund now. Or, you know, how people feel about that, I don't know.
Once you sign your name on the line, saying that you wanna be a member, is that counted as membership already, or it has to be paid in full before it's counted as a membership?
No, no, if you paying payments, we could count you as a member.
Oh, okay.
If you making a payment, we gonna count you as a member.
Okay.
Because that's all they, they pretty much ask you, is how many members you got, when you go to a bank, or whatever, they're gonna just ask us how, I mean, we can lie, but we don't wanna lie. You know, we want to, right, we don't wanna lie, you know.
Leave it open for people to, to be a member, and then send out notices, e- via email, or something like that, for people who, you know, reminding you that there is a payment, you know, that there's an outstanding balance for your membership.
Uh huh, yeah, yeah, so I think too, uh, we need to come up with how we would, what would be our, our requirement, what would be our eligibility? You know?
That's all I'm saying.
No, I'm, no, I, I agree with you, but I'm just saying, let's come up with it.
Yeah.
The, no, I'm not saying nothing's wrong with coming up with that, but, but let's not like, make them show a whole lot, I think that's a lot of times we pull back, because we have to show so much and all that. And I just wanna be kinda different, uh, than that type of entity. Uh, as far as like, making them show us documentation, or whatever, I don't know what else we could do, though. Uh, you know, you saying if they're unemployed, that would be a reason for not being able to pay. You know, cuz, you know, your unemployment, you wanted to try to cover your, your rent, and your light, and, you know, things like that, so. Uh?
I mean, even, you gotta think about, too, it could still be people working, and still struggling.
True, cuz everybody is not.
Hello!
Yeah, people are not making a living wage, you're right.
But it still have to be some type of requirement, I.
Like what?
I don't know.
What could we come up with?
That could be worked out, right? I mean, that's.
Well, we can't publicize until we work it out. So you guys just, I don't know, I don't know, I'm not really sure.
Meeting next week, I mean, that's something we can all work together, or you think it can be worked out right now on the call?
I just say, think about it.
At the community, uh.
Well, we'll see.
I just say, think about it. I just say, think about it, because I know, what, what, I know the vision, I understand the vision, but you can't let people come in and destroy that vision, because of selfishness. So, uh, I just say we should think about it, I mean, I, I'm, I'm aboard with, uh, what, what you call it, the equity?
It's community.
Community, I'm aboard with it, but I just think it should be some type of requirement, that's all I'm saying.
Because let's think about it, we put it on the website, right, cuz this is how I saw it on another co-op's website, you just put it under the website. And again, they gotta start out with something like five, ten dollars, and then commit to paying with it.
Because these people, if they wanna pack a cigarette, cigarettes are twelve, thirteen dollars a pack, they gonna get them cigarettes. They gonna get the money to get that.
But you can't say, you can't say it, because those people out here.
I understand, I, yes, I can, I understand people, I, I. I'm not doing that, I said some people, I didn't say that, I didn't say all people.
I think that community equity ideally is great, it's gonna bring in a lot of members.
I just don't want to turn people from not wanting to sign up, and what's we, what we do need is the membership. That's what, that's what I'm saying, we, we focusing on the membership, want the membership to be, you know, coming up. So if, if, if you giving them a, a, a way to come in, and we could put that on paper, that's it right there, now.
That's gonna build up the membership.
Right, that's gonna build a membership for paper.
And then too, guess what, let me just say this, sometimes you can have something so great that they say, hey, I got the re- get, get the rest of my money in here, cuz I'm proud of what I'm doing. Cuz soon as I told the gentleman, uh, who's showing us the place, I said, we wanna make this a place, he said, I really want to buy it myself, he said, but I couldn't come up with the money. So I said, if you invest your hundred dollars in it with us, you gonna own part of this, you gonna own this. You'll be able to tell your family, we own this store down there, cuz we all owners, right, we're all owners.
It's such a positive mission, it's gonna draw in a lot of positive people.
Right.
Down to that level, like you just said, the community equity, that's, it's so positive, it's just gonna bring in a lot of positive participation.
Right, I, I think so too, and then too, that, think about it too, and equity, we're saying, we, I might be able to do the hundred dollars, but somebody else might not, so I'm saying in equity, right, I'm willing to just lend you a hand up, right? So we can, your five dollars and my hundred dollars is really equal, cuz I'ma still call you a member, right? I'ma still call you a member, but I'm just giving you a longer time to pay on your membership, that's all I'm doing.
And like William said, also, it gives people an opportunity to maybe to help somebody, maybe, you know, I would help, uh, Susan, uh, add, give her twenty-five dollars, or even fifty dollars, or whatever, to make her a hundred, you know.
Something, well, we already did, me and, well, you guys been sponsoring, but me and Gina, and then we had got a little extra with the two members that I got from, uh, the, uh, Equal Opportunities, uh, Employment Page, we got two members from that, no, actually, we got three members from that. And then we got, uh, we got, let's see, three members from the Equal Opportunities Employment Page, and then also, we got, uh, some recommendations. Uh, so these people were saying, I don't have the money right now, those are the people I'll be telling them about this Equity Fund. You know, just letting them know, you know, hey, we got this new program, you know, why don't you come in under that program? Cuz I've had people say, I don't have it, they might have been sponsored, right? They might have been sponsored by someone else, you know, or if we had some sponsorship money still up there. Uh, the, the Vakia sponsored, uh, I think Michelle got blessed by her, uh, sponsorship, so pe- some people have been getting sponsored, but this is just a little different. When I meet somebody, and I hear that they can't come in under our hundred dollar structure, I can say, well, we have a new program just starting. Would you like to come in under that program? So I think that that will, um, again, boost us up, and, uh, even my morale, do you know, when, uh, people hear that you got more membership, it just boosts the morale up, I think.
Right. While it's, while we're talking about this, um, about fundraising that I was asking you about, I brought a ticket to be a part of a fundraiser through Sister Joyce's son and his fiance, and so, uh, she serves as president. Um, the Northeastern, uh, Illinois Food Pop-Up Like giveaway, they give away food to, you know, thousands and, and thousands of people, so they had this fundraiser, so I participated, it's a hundred dollars, but do you think it would be worthwhile for South, because in talking to Dorian's mom, who's gonna be in it too, she was saying, well, you know what, this is gonna be by me participating, she was saying, wow, you might get uh, donations, or you may get people to buy into the Southside Food Co-op, so as we were discussing that this morning, uh, Pastor Bernadine, do you think it would be beneficial for Southside Food Co-op to purchase a hundred dollar ticket? Charity, it's a charity, and, and it's all nonprofit, and they give, like I said, foods, boxes to sell, thousands and thousands of people. With the thought that we may get possible sponsors also through and from that organization, it's called the Northeastern Food Pop-Up, you know, organization. I hope I presented that. Just a question.
Okay, Neff, uh, let's see, make sure he's, uh, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, you guys, everybody, I'm mute now, I think you guys heard a question, if you want to, uh, weigh in. Again, I think it's a good idea, uh, because I, you know, just people knowing about who we are, uh, and what we stand for, uh, they will join, like I said, I went to.
Bernadine would be a part of that, it's, it's like, it's a Zoom meeting, held on March ninth, so Pastor Bernadine would rep- actually represent Southside Food Co-op, so she would be a part of that virtual Zoom meeting also, I'm in there as an individual, and I'm on, you know, of course, I'm a part of it, but Burnburn would be representing the ticket for the Southside Food Co-op. If we, if you all decided that, that sounds like a good idea.
And it's a hundred dollar investment, so, you guys can unmute and just address that. Uh, I'm sorry, I, I had to unmute, I heard some background noise.
Who get blessed with the sponsorship?
Oh, no, this. Yeah, that was me, I'm actually in the store, and it's kinda loud behind me.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay.
So what I was gonna, um, so what I was, what I was gonna say is, um, you know, for lack of a better word, you gotta, you gotta kinda entice people, we gotta make this a priority, we gotta let them know it's limited spaces available for ownership, and I think there should be some type of tier system, so you don't wanna be an owner for a hundred dollars fine, you wanna be a supporter, maybe you a supporter, twenty-five dollars, or five dollars, or maybe, um, you want some type of plan to where you can go from donator to supporter to owner, we, we, like a tier structure. That's what I'm saying, so if you're an owner, you're paying a hundred, you get the owner certificate, if you're a supporter, you get some type of supporter certificate, if you're a donator, cuz you only had three dollars in your pocket at that time, now you're donated, at least recognizing everyone's effort, and then it's gonna encourage them to do more, as they see this, this project grow.
I like that, I like that, I like the donator, uh, cuz we have been getting donations, so I do like that donator, uh, 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 group. Just to have them, hey, you made donations to Southside Food Co-op, we wouldn't be here if it weren't for your donations, I love that. And then, but the Community E- Equity Fund is strictly supposed to be geared towards those people in the community that you know are not able uh, to actually buy that hundred dollar investment. Uh, so it could be somebody unemployed, or, uh, somebody who is working, and, and they, you know, they're just having a hard time making ends meet. I think most of us, uh, who paid the hundred dollars already, uh, we, we like, we like the idea, and if we could pay it, we, we did it, you know? And I'm thinking, I'm, I'm praying to God, if we set this up for such, that we will continue to get those who are able to pay it, and then we're even asking our membership to pay, uh, pay it for it, to buy a membership for somebody who you think might not be able to buy a membership. Uh, we, we're asking, um, we're getting ready to do that, uh, project as well, asking our membership to pay it for. So that would almost, if, for the ones who will, that would almost what, double our size right there, if everybody, you know, brought, brought a membership for somebody, who you think, just to say, hey, I want you to be part owner of, of corner, uh, Southside Food Co-op. I want you to be part owner, so I'm gonna buy, I brought your membership for you. So I think that that would be a good tool, and then too, also, to add this other component, I think it's a win-win situation. So, uh, I'm gonna continue to, uh, talk with Nevada here, and Elvis, and then too, I think that that's something, okay, we want the whole membership to vote on, uh, the sixty-six properties, sixty-sixth Sangamon property, should we go for, would you like, would you support a store in that community, would you support a store at this address, that's, that's not gonna hurt. Uh, and then, two, maybe we could pose this as a question to the entire membership as well, about the Community Equity Fund. What do you guys think about that? Posing these two questions for them to vote on, and making it like a voting system.
It sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay, uh, okay, you guys just let, unmute, and then we're, that's the last point, we're through. Okay, so what do you think about just voting on those two topics, just, let's, let's hear from the whole entire, uh, membership? Is that a yes, no, maybe?
I thought it was a good idea, I don't know if you heard me or not.
Yep, I heard you, I got you.
Okay.
I think it's an excellent idea, I think, uh, yeah, I think, I think it's going back to, uh, what is the, the purpose of it is all about.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay, alright.
I think it's a great idea also.
Okay. Alright, so, okay, and then, uh, Community Equity, alright then, alright, so Elvis, would you work on me, with me on that? Uh, try to get it done, like, some, similar to what we did for the, uh, for the, uh, survey. And that's something I think we, we need to readdress again, too, do we need to try to push that survey more, just to get more, um, uh, data, what do you guys think? The survey that we, we did, we could push the same survey, what do you guys think?
Yes, that, that'll be great, Pastor Burn.
Mm, okay.
Yes.
Okay, alright, alright, alright then, I think I heard from everybody, uh, any other, uh?
What about the, uh, what about the fundraiser that they're doing for the Northeastern, uh, Illinois, I may have missed something, cuz I had to go out for a minute.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, did you guys, uh, think that you, this was a good investment for us to, to do the hundred dollars, or you think we don't really have a hundred dollars to invest?
Because whether you're doing that, I'ma be a part of it, so if I get the opportunity to say something, or whatever, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we definitely, we definitely need to do it, I mean, if they're passing out food, if they doing ten, you know, doing that much amount of food, that's, you know, gonna be a good connection for us to get up in there, you know?
Okay.
It's right along the line of what we doing, so.
Okay, so that way I can, uh, I can, uh, text her, email her to tell her that this organization wants to purchase a, because she's the, um, like I said, the person that's sponsoring it, or giving it, she's the president of it, right? So she operates this whole thing, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, and that's for March ninth, right?
Yep, March ninth, oh, no, 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 I apologize, Sunday, March seventh, Sunday, March the seventh. Two o'clock.
Okay, alright, alright, not this Sunday, but next Sunday. At two PM, and it's virtual.
That's William McGee's birthday.
Alright, 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 I think that's it, guys, hallelujah, we can get ready close, hallelujah, I'm turning it over to you, William. Okay, where did he go?
So I have, I'm, I have, so you say, if we pay, we could pay towards the membership fee? And, do we, you, do we have to wait till it's paid off to become a member, or when you put the money down, you consider a member?
Okay, my thinking was, you will be a member automatically, that, that, to me, that now, are you guys thinking that we should wait till they pay the four hundred dollars? I don't think so, I don't think that's how they doing it, in the co-op world, I think they.
And deactivate membership?
Can you deactivate it?
Yeah, let's say they stop paying the ten dollars.
Well.
No longer, I mean, they no longer active members at that point.
Well, you know what, if, if they. Well, you know what? If if they stop paying their ten dollars because they struggling, I would probably pay, like say if they had thirty dollars left, I would probably do it.
Okay, that's different, right? You looking at it from a different aspect, right? You coming in and saving them. But you can't do that with a hundred people or two hundred people.
Mother.
She's got a servant heart. She's got a heart for the people.
I just don't like the idea of deactivating.
It's a better way to think about that, though.
Yeah. I just don't know if I like the idea of deactivating.
As long as, I mean, I I think that we'll uh, I mean, a good, another different way to go about it is, you know, if they put their five dollars, you know, if they start the program, uh, they could be members, but not fully paid members, I guess. You know, we gotta make some type of distinction. So when they finish it, uh, you know, it's, you know, they're full member.
Well, why don't we give them a certain, like, uh, okay.
Certain designation?
Why don't we give them a payment, like a payment date? So if I pay my, you know what I'm saying? Like you have to pay monthly or you pay every two weeks or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely, you know, they're gonna have that. But I think what Elvis is saying, like, if somebody just, you know, just do it, you know, if we got a lot of people that just start the membership, but you know, they might move out the city or something, or you know, just never pay or whatever. So are we gonna?
Put in some type of verbiage. If your membership fee is not paid within a year, then your membership is, you know.
Right, we we could give longer than that. I mean, you know, it's no pressure. We don't want to put pressure on people.
If you, if you're trying to get a membership paid off, then if you're trying to get a membership paid off, that's, that's the thing. So I would say if you don't pay your membership within three months, like you're paying on it, then, I mean, then what?
Well, you know, a lot of people have a ten, they have ten months to pay it. They they pay ten dollars a month. I've seen, yeah, I've seen them pay like ten dollars a month on the the regular payment plan structure on a lot of the websites. They pay as low as like ten dollars a month consecutively. Now, this is another thing. I don't know if, how we can do where like uh the Klarna and Affirm and little different payments plans where it just come out of your account automatically. I don't know how, if we could set that up like that. I'm not sure.
If you would do something like that, you would probably want to do it online.
Yeah, but I don't know how we could do it through the website. I don't know. I don't know how we could set that up. Uh, you know, as far as uh, we would probably have to, we would probably have to connect with another uh entity that will take the payments and and hold the cards and stuff like that where they hit hit your card consecutively. And once you pay, because they'll tell you another payment made, another payment made, and when it's paid in full, they let you know. But I don't know about, you know, if we could, you know, work that out with Affirm or not, because I don't think that that's a good idea for us to try to keep that.
That's a possibility, ma.
That's a lot of work.
That's a possibility. Nobody manually, you know, checks that stuff nowadays. It's all automated through some type of software.
Right. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. Uh, Steven, you said PayPal will let them do that?
I think, I think, I I believe with PayPal, you can, you can schedule payments, or if we use something like Square, you can send out invoices every month.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay.
Yeah, you can send out an invoice through PayPal too.
Oh, you can send it out to PayPal too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Who's gonna keep up with it?
Well, I don't know. Is that something you, you, uh, Lydia, Michelle, you, Lydia wanted to keep up with David treasure?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. I mean, that's something that we're proposing to do. I don't see why not. If it says messages, why are you laughing?
Because I'm looking at Michelle's face. I'm like, Michelle.
Michelle said, TT, you know, I'm gonna be doing it all. That's what she said.
Look how she does.
I can't see her face.
I can't. It's okay. It's okay. Well, I think this is something we could address again is not publicized. We have not publicized it. It's just a thought, something that we're considering. So we will not publicize it until we have everything where everybody is happy, who have to do these functions. So, all right, so this is just a thought for us to think on, okay? All right, we're gonna close.
So I'm, so going back to my question, if you, if somebody now wanted to pay twenty-five dollars.
Hmm. What I would, hmm, I would be asking them, I would send them a member pack. And then I would just probably put in a special letter in their pack asking them to pay if they could please pay the twenty-five dollars monthly until it's paid up. So that would be four months.
How do you pay for membership?
Uh, you can do Zelle. We have Cash App, or we'll take cash checks. You can mail the checks in and we'll deposit it for you. So we have a lot of ways that you could do it. Or you could register through our um website, but I prefer not because they take a fee out of uh our money. So when you go through the website, we have to pay, I think it's almost six dollars. Uh, we're paying per a hundred dollars. So it's better that uh people that we know straight up, that they just hit the Zelle with a hundred dollars and simply send us an email stating that they just zelled their hundred dollars and send their name, address, phone number, and email address, so we can respond back to them.
Okay, also with the verbiage that's on on the GoFundMe, with the Cash App and um like, if somebody want to make, don't want to use the the GoFundMe, but they want to do a a donation through Cash App or Pay or Zelle or something like that, would that be on there as well?
Uh, we can add it. Hmm, we can add it. I don't think it is on there. Is, am I correct? Oh, it's not on there now.
Yeah, as long as it's like a payment form and they can choose to be, you know, founder for a hundred, supporter for X amount of money, donator for X amount of money, and then whatever the, whatever we designate as someone that wants to do a payment plan towards ownership. You know, maybe we call them a builder or a planner, to give them some type of designation to say, okay, you worked your way up to ownership and we'll recognize you for that. So as long as, you know, it's it's still going back to the tier system, but at least that way, at a glance, we can know who's who. You know, you know, when we look at these accounts and interact with these people and, you know, try to promote it and push it from there, because we'll have their testimony to say, hey, you know, I paid five dollars a month for for twenty months and I got in there. You can do it too. You know, we want, we want, we want that verbiage. We want those, those, those testimonials.
I like that. I like that. That's a good idea. So again, we just have to uh figure out designations uh for that. So maybe we would not term, put that under like Community Equity Fund. Maybe we won't do that now. We'll just do tiers. That might be a better way to take, take, take it to a next level. I think, yeah, I like that. Okay, uh, anybody else like that idea, taking it maybe just to tiers at this point? Instead of the Community Equity Fund?
On that again.
Okay, we're, okay, we have our gold founding members now. Everybody coming in up to three hundred, our gold founding members, right? The next tier is uh after we surpass three hundred, they're gonna be just member owners, member owners. Then we'll have a tier that says donation. Those are people that are not expressing any type of uh 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 where they want to be a member. They're not expressing that. They're just saying, I'm gonna give you a twenty dollar donation. So they are our donators. And I could simply, we send them thank you cards, whatever. Thank you for donating your twenty dollars. We stay in touch with them. You know, things of that nature. They might come around and donate another one. But they're still not expressing interest in becoming a member. But then those people who don't have that money uh are, you know, they're saying, you know, I really don't have the money, but I I I want to start by paying with this small amount of money. We need to give a a designation to them. I don't know what that would be yet. I I'm not, I don't, I don't have that in my mind.
So it still has to be named?
Yes.
That category still has to be named. Okay.
I think we need to talk that over, beat that through and think on that a little bit more. Uh, just so they can have, because we sent out a certificate to everyone. Uh, and that way, even this last tier that we're trying to, you know, really push and get, you know, as many people as possible, we need to still have something that sound good that they want to pay towards to they finish. And I don't know what that is. Uh, I think uh Steven, you said a planter or something like that? Uh, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. But that that tier. What, what did you say?
Planner, planner, or builder, some type of destination, so we can recognize that person like, okay, they worked their way up to ownership. I I was just throwing builder and planner out there.
Okay, okay, builder member or something like that. Okay, that's something to just keep thinking about. I like that, though. I like that thought. And then the equity, Equity Fund could come later. Maybe once we're planning in a community, we're just trying to gain a lot of members. You know?
So the the top is, the top category is like the gold members?
Yep.
So what are the silver? Do we have anything designated like a silver member?
Hmm.
Silver, okay. Just, I'm just thinking because, you know, you got different, like he was saying, categories. So you could have gold, you could have silver. You could have another that would cover those people that want to put in in like five or, you know, whatever. What would a silver member be? Could they go under silver? Just trying to reach that goal? Just a thought.
I I don't know. I just think that maybe uh because we could always push uh the gold founder member up to whatever number we want. But silver would be anybody who comes under to me, the gold founder members.
They would be definitely under.
Hmm.
That's why I was just throwing it out.
We had said three hundred was our first number that we wanted to try to, try to make these the elite people that we consider are are founders. You know, of the, of of the co-op. And then, so I guess we could make everybody else silver. That wouldn't hurt. And then we could have another tier. What would be the next tier would be what? Bronze?
Underneath that, gold, just like the Olympics.
Huh?
Yeah, just like the Olympics.
Bronze would be the people that's building up to it. Okay, that's interesting. Okay, that's interesting.
Silver and gold.
Okay, that's interesting. Because we could do it whichever way we want. Okay, okay. All right, when I'm finished, uh, William?
Okay, wait, we we can't, we can't have the builder, the builders that's trying to get to membership. Like, when, once you're, like a silver member can never be a gold member.
Hmm.
So it's, so putting it like that, that the builders will be a bronze member, that's making it seem like the silver members can't obtain a gold membership, and that's not true.
Oh, yes, you're right. That's a good thought. See, that's why it's so good to have these fresh minds.
I'm glad I thought of that.
So in other words, you could keep silver, but we can't do the bronze? Hello?
I'm, I'm looking.
If you go, I mean, if anything, you can't give a bronze membership, I mean, a bronze title to the donation, the the don, the people who donate.
So we'll just have a different title for, for bronze?
It would be a
So we could have gold, which is our founding members. It's a cutoff, right? And then we could have silver, which would be all of our member owners. Is that correct? All of the member owners, and then the bronze is just for those who donate. Is that correct?
And bronze, so, see, this is the thing. When we, when we do it like that, we have to put it because bronze will never have a share in
The voting.
So we have to state that since we, since we are distinguishing gold members, silver members, bronze members, we have to state who has ownership in the co-op now.
I like that. I like that. That's true. That's true. That's true. That's true. Something to think about. We don't have to, we don't have to decide today, y'all. So that, that is true.
I thought.
Maybe that should be listed on the website, like the three, the three different tiers, like what you, like when you go to Sam Club, you get a membership. They have different membership packages. Underneath, it lists what your membership package include. So maybe something like that should be listed on the website, like what this membership, what the bronze include, what the gold include, what the silver include.
I I would say that if we, you know, we might not want to do a bronze membership uh just because it gets kind of confusing, or we don't want to say membership. You know, uh, you know, the members, you know, is a hundred, you know, people that's paying a hundred. You know, once you get to that level, or if they are, you know, if they sign up for the program, the Equity Program, they're ahead of to that. If you just donating, you know, I mean, you donate, you know, that don't mean that you are, I don't thi, you know, because anybody could donate. So with that, you know, ju, you know, if you make a donation, they don't need to get a, we don't want to say membership.
Just leave it to donate and then thank them. There's some thanking them for their donation.
Yeah, and then thank them, you know, I mean, people could donate. You know, so, you know, we ain't even got to do like, say, milk, you know, use those words. You know, uh, because it gets, you know, it gets a little confusing or whatever. We just keep everything at the silver. You know, uh, people, you know, get, you know, the first people that, three hundred people, like we said, is gold. You know, and everybody else is silver. You know, I think it's pretty simple, you know, that's, that's, you know, clear and direct or whatever. But that's just my suggestion, you know?
I'm, I'm letting you close it out.
Okay, everybody, good meeting. Hallelujah.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, we just touched over everything that's been put out there. And uh, I just want to say quickly, man, just again, on the crowdfunding is a a a big thing, you know, there's crowdfunding. Because even if, you know, say we got somebody to buy a building, we still got to come up with money to fix. You know, so uh, you know, the building fund, you know, uh, and and even with that, Elvis, like I see you were saying, you know, let's add that in, you know, just let people know this is for the building, for whatever building that we get. You know, uh, it's it's for, it's for repairs or whatever, in a sense, you know? The verbiage exactly, you know, you could, you could figure it out how you want to put it. And just asking everybody, you know, just share. The more that we share it, the crowdfunding, you know, the more, the better, you know, so uh, just share it through Messenger, wherever you can, you know? And uh, that's it. I I didn't have anything else, I guess.
All right, then I'm just gonna ask that we let Elvis maybe uh update it a little bit before we start sharing it fully. I think that that might help as well uh to make sure we got it all uh cohesive. Everybody's sharing the same thing. So we'll give him time to uh, Elvis, would you let us know when we can really start sharing it? Again, maybe you go back in there and tweak it a little bit.
Uh, GoFundMe?
Uh-huh, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, so we'll, we'll get that shared again and um I think that that would be a better way to go about it. All right, all right, thank you all.
Love you all.
Excellent meeting.
All right.
All right, so we can meet again. God bless.
Love you.
All right, love you all.
Love you all.
You too. Right, right, everybody.